Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight is a budget deliberation meeting for the Board of Selectmen. So we're going to start, if you'd like, we can start with each page and go through. Tom Robinson is here, so if there's any notes to be taken in terms of numbers, Tom will do that, and of course Laura Sienna is taking our minutes. What I would suggest for format is that we go through each budget department, and as you have changes, well, Tom and I will make those notations. And then, if you would allow us, we'll go back tomorrow and review it, and most likely bring it back to you on the 11th, because I suspect there may be some needed adjustments, and then we would be able to have you have that information ahead of the 11th so that you'd be ready for potential adoption on that date. Does that sound okay? That would be a special meeting. All right, so to get things started, is there anything under revenues which starts on page five? If there isn't, then we'll move to the first department, which is 001 on page 19, Board of Selectmen. Are there any suggested changes?
What page? 19.
19?
Yep.
The next is 02 for Select Woman's Budget. Is there any suggested changes? Page 23 Ethics. Mission, there's really not much there. Probate Court, that is a number that the probate court gives to us, so there's really very little that we can do to change that. Elections, that is a reduction of 4.22 percent. Any suggested changes? Finance Department, 0.62 percent increase. Any changes? Page 31 Collector of Revenue. Page 33, am I right? Okay. Board of Assessment Appeals, page 35. There's no change in that budget, or I should say that department. Town Council, there's no change in that department. Town Clerk. Thank you. Central Services, page 41. There's no change in this budget that I see from this year. Technology.
I have a question.
Sure.
On... On the fuel, the utilities.
Yes.
If, I don't know, if Tom's numbers from what was left in the budget on March 19th is, assuming that's correct, based on their rate of expense, I did the math, and they would be spending, this year they'd be going through $775. And I noticed that throughout the budget, on all the, most of the utility items, it just seems like we have a higher number than the rate they're spending at so far this, through this budget cycle. So I was just wondering why that is.
Tom, do you want to make a comment on that?
And I don't see the price of fuel going up drastically unless you know something I don't.
We had a magnificent pricing last year, probably the best pricing since I've been here. It was maybe a $1.68. We were $1.87 on oil. The oil bids came out, they were in the mid-2s, about 20 to 30 percent. So we did not lock, we were on the float. The state, the oil, for gasoline now, for next year, we're on the float still, as they were significantly higher. Again, that is one of those ones where if it was an unknown, you know, that can jump anywhere. You know, we were seeing prices of $4, $4 to $3 eight times before, and that's just a number that you have in there. At the time, like last year, the price was unknown, and you know, so again, those budgets, if you had known, if we knew if we were at a 1.8 again, or a 1.68, yeah, we probably would know that and know to lock it, but we're, we don't know to lock it with this price, at the prices that we're currently at with the increases, and so we've left the budgets at the levels where they were, which have still decreased from the high, high ends, but are definitely at a level higher than we are spending right now. But again, it's, there's, we're not locked in for fiscal year 2019 at this point, because the, when the pricing came in, it came out quite a bit higher.
So what number of a range, approximate number, did you use to figure?
Those are the same. That's probably roughly, I think that's probably like about maybe $2.75 to $3.00 a gallon, I would think. But again, most of those numbers are more or less the same carryover, just, again, it's an unknown. So to, as we worked toward keeping the budget flat, we just kind of more or less left the, those, you know, the same, or when they were significantly higher, we lowered it to an estimate that we thought was more reasonable, again, with the fluctuation. You know, you're one war, or one act of terror from, you know, from a price where you're at $2, $2 or so dollars to $3.
I think it's high, but that's my opinion.
47, Fire Marshal. Yes.
You're going too fast for me.
All right, what page do you want to go back to?
Fire Department.
Okay.
I have the same, same kind of question, essentially the same logic on the electricity for the fire departments, like a, we're budgeting $32,000, but at the rate we're paying our electric bills, we're gonna come in at about just under $22,000. So are, how are you figuring your cost of electricity, or your usage? Is there some? Because as of March 19th, you had $13,000 left, and there was only 25 percent of the year remaining.
Yep.
Yeah.
So yeah, so through February, we've had, we're at about $18,000. If you looked at the past three years, or 16, you were at $28,000, $29,000.
Right.
We've been, we were holding steady on our distribution, more or less, on our consumption rate. Our distribution, there was stated that there was probably going to be somewhere to a 7 to 10 percent increase. So trying to stay as consistent as possible, we went off of that rate to get about a $32,000 number.
Are you buying electricity through the standard offer, or are you shopping around with the various?
We utilize, so we go through the Connecticut Council Municipalities. We have a, we go out and we participate in their energy program. We've been a member of that. I know it's been here since before I was here. The activity is bidded in a open market bid with a consultant, a Bay State consultants, Bay City consultants, our long-term energy consultants. They go out, run a bid every so often when the market is right, and then generally it's in a blend-to-extend issue. The last cycle, the TransCanada was possibly in the market of being acquired or doing some changes, so Constellation actually won that bid. So we did quite well on the, on that rate, it was a strong rate based on what the consultant stated, and we reached out to them, and they, you know, informed us that last year Susan and I had met with the bands from EverSource, and she'd stated that kind of there's, you know, potential of a distribution increase, which we, you know, you do see the distribution increase.
You don't have much control over that.
Right, and so, you know, that's where we're sitting, and, you know, we were told that there was going to be an increase, so that's what his budget is, a slight $500 increase to the line of.
But, well, two things. You sort of answered the question about are you shopping to get the best rate you can, and usually you enter a contract for a year, like with Constellation. I've had business contracts with Constellation. So are you currently with, who are you with right now?
So the, so the energy is acquired, it's provided through Constellation.
Okay.
And it comes through on the EverSource bill.
Right, right, okay. And we have a contract with them?
Correct.
Okay. But my, the question I asked initially was, unless I have incorrect numbers, it's...
You got, I mean, you got the biggest summer month, the heating, June is going to be a lot of usage, May is going to be a lot of usage.
For electricity?
For air conditioning.
Okay.
Running the building, you know what I mean?
Okay.
I mean, open the doors, and there's, the doors go up, and the air goes out, it's like the heating, same issue. I mean, we're up, like I said, this is probably the numbers you're looking at, you were looking at a May or a March report, that's probably January.
Well, I'm looking at a Mar, what, I think it's a March number.
That's probably January, right?
Pardon?
It's probably January, because you wouldn't get the bill for...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
For February until the middle of March.
Okay.
So now we're, now, you know, now we're, so I'm looking at an April number, which is probably the February number, and that's around $19,000. So you're gonna have, you know, April, March, April, May, June, so you've got about four more months left.
So let me ask you this, on the electricity, where, I'm just looking at this fire department as an example. 2015, 16 was $27,875, and then 2016, 17 was $29,208, and this, well, this budget year, we're not done with yet. How close do we come to hitting those numbers?
Those are actuals.
Oh, those are actuals?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else on that page?
Not on that page, but if you wanted to go back to 37, on the Town Council, I brought a few of the older ones with me, so back in like 13, we spent $115, 14, 15, we spent $89. In like 15, 16, we budgeted $88,000, spent $137 and change. I don't know what we budgeted in 16, 17, but we spent almost $170,000. And this year, we're budgeting $97,000. What makes us think we're actually going to hit that mark, and how do we control these numbers in a better fashion? Because I can, I can say firsthand, I've seen how this has been used where it isn't necessary. So how, how can we control that number to keep it within reason? Because you're talking $70,000 over budget last year alone.
Well, you'll know, last year, there was quite a bit of development in terms of the Elmcrest project, and a lot of that went into this budget here. I mean, that, that was, I know, that was an unusual year, and there were some other situations as well. A lot of it is in land use, as you know, and this year, I think, is a little better year. There's a little less going on, but there are cases that come up, and as they do, the town is protected in terms of when we go through an attorney.
How much of that 70 do you think was equated to Elmcrest?
The 70, which line then?
I'm sorry, the $70,000 over what we originally budgeted for.
I'd have to go back and look it up for you. That's not the only issue. There were some other issues that we had too, some zoning issues. We still have one that's ongoing that you may be familiar with, it's a driveway. It was a cease and desist issue that still hasn't been resolved, and then there were some other development issues that we had as well.
But I just think there, we definitely need better control measures. I can think of one case where the town attorney was involved and didn't change the outcome, it cost the taxpayers a ton of money, and it wasn't necessary. I think we need more oversight, either from this entire board, one matters like that, or picked, because it's pretty easy to just pick who's going to get an attorney put against them and who's not, and I think that would, would explain how this could go so far over budget, because we're talking, that's real money, $70,000 over...
Yeah, and I recall, there was a lot of work done that year, and you may not agree with the usage of the attorney, but there was a lot of issues, and I, I don't know that you're aware of all of them, you're aware of some of them.
Right, and I'm sure you're right.
But in terms of how you control it, Ben, I'd suggest that when we do our monthly budget reports, we'll give you some, some good answers and questions, we can certainly, that's why we do that every month, I think that's one effective way.
Well, I think more to the point where this entire board should weigh in, whether, for example, if two people are developing properties identically, and only one gets a hire, an attorney hired against them, well, that needs to be looked into, that's what I'm referring to. And I think that is exactly what happened in one of my cases, and the town wasted a lot of money.
You're talking about your own case?
In my wife's case, yes. And the town spent a ton of money when another person in town had the identical application at the same time, and had three out of the same four issues that the town attorney created, and they wasted a ton of money on mine and didn't on the others. So back to wasting the taxpayers' money, and I think we have to have a better accountability on how to make sure $70,000, which is a lot of money when we need windows and schools, floors fixed, you name it. I could see a lot of better places to spend that money in the future.
Thank you. Anything else on that page, 37? 39? Town Clerk? Central Services? And we had stopped on technology. Was there anything else on that page?
Susan, I was looking through here again, and I know when we went through the budget before, there was a section about the blighted account that we had.
Yes, yes.
Where is that?
Tom, in terms of the blight account, is that, which page is that?
It's page 95, the component of public interest.
I just wanted to make sure we hadn't gone by.
Okay, yep.
Page 107?
So why don't we asterisk that, when we get to that page, we'll...
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, for?
On this technology.
Yep.
Our computer network maintenance has shot up, well, it went from $9,000 to $34.5 this year, and we're budgeting for $35,000. Is that, can you just explain what, what's going on there? Is that part of that hacking we had issue?
It's related to us.
Yeah, all right.
So a few minutes back, IT Director Kuzminsky explained, went through the expected overage in computer maintenance. So Computer Maintenance is our third-party consultant, and we've, you know, generally it's that $35,000 or whatever $1,000 number that you have there. We had had, we had a consultant, pretty much the same amount many years back. The gentleman unfortunately passed away, got another consultant, and worked with them. They had a little bit of a, you know, some issues with trying to staff the job. So in the fiscal year where there was a diminish, there was probably a good six months to seven months where we were really trying to do it all ourselves, and getting backlog, and trying to work through that as we went out to bid, worked through the bid cycle. That year, unfortunately, the IT director was out on some leave for a while, so we had to work that, you know, work around the bids and everything. So around May of that year, that's low, we signed on an agreement with Videsian, our local, a local vendor here in town, that is working on our agreement, on our, on our activities. So May, you know, so again, you had a low, that one year was a, was a just a...
Aberration.
Yeah, nobody was really there doing the work. Once the gentleman, they came on, they did some initial reviews as well, so there was so, early in the year, we had a little bit of money spent, big gap, a little late in the year. Then this year, they came on, working through just general, some backlogs, and some other things that just needed to be improved. Couple, couple issues of big that occurred. The firewall that we had, it was a sonic wall, the apparatus, it did, it failed. There was, that apparatus got reconfigured, was another apparatus that got reconfigured, so hours spent on that. That was a time-consuming endeavor. In that instance, then we kept working, working, working. That was a little bit of a deeded firewall as well, the hacks occur. We had a few other just network issues that we're working through, getting up to date. So there's been more spent on that, and then probably, that probably will exceed actually the budget. We are anticipating and attempting to file a insurance claim for the work that was on the, related to the hack itself, and that, so we're going to try to do that separately, charge that to a separate fund and bring the money in. Hopefully, we get the money back. We'll do our best on those components. We have not received the bills on that. So the bills that you're seeing on expense to date, and where we're at, those have really nothing yet to do with those charges legitimately additional work required on rollouts, on system, computer rollouts, on software rollouts, on, on networking issues that just come up day to day.
So is this a new reality, this 30, mid 30s?
Well, that's more or less consistent reality. That's what it had been in the past, and then dipped, you know, dipped as they kind of, you know, we're having a little trouble, and then we hired back a different consultant. So that's the normal way around where you're spending, you know, the 30-ish, mid 30 range. I think the, I believe the director asked for more, and we just didn't put that in, you know, but...
All right, thank you.
Anything else on that page?
Not on that page.
No, okay. 45, which is the Fire Department. Anything in addition there? Fire Marshal?
Okay. Is it, I have a question on the contract. So are we dealing with the same, is it the same contract, essentially the same people, the same program? Because it just seems to be going up.
It's a 3 percent typical increase, and if you could look on the left-hand side, this is the system, and it is the contract that we have with the city of Middletown. So it is a contract that we have, it's a five-year contract. I want to say it's two more years, Bob? We're in year three of a five-year contract. And in addition, the city of Middletown is investing a $12 million improvement to the system. It should be up and running, they're thinking, by Labor Day. The dollars in this budget, on page 49, which is budget number 01-022, does not reflect the monies that we spent this year to buy new radios for the police department to be compatible with the new $12 million system that they instituted. The other thing that we're doing, and it's not reflected on this page, Rick, is we made some improvements to the stability and integrity of the tower that's up on the high school campus. And that work was just completed because the new system required new equipment that the city of Middletown will install in the radio room, as well as on the tower itself. There's some other improvements that the Fire Department is making to their system, and they're utilizing some saved capital monies that they had, and some other monies that we have through the, through other accounts. So the dispatching center, and the daily dispatching that they do, is $130,983 for police dispatching, fire, emergency, and to a certain extent, public works.
Okay, just one point, from 15, 16 to 16, 17, it went up more than...
I think that was the new contract, if I'm not mistaken.
So back in the day, you used to be, you used to run all your emergency alarms through a system that we, our town, all our town alarms, through a system that was over at the facility that we owned and operated, and the dispatch guys had to administer it. They weren't real, they didn't really like that too much. At times, if you didn't get the error, the possibility that reporting would go down, life safety could be a concern, because you actually pay for the housing authority, as well as the school. So we monitor all those components. So we switched over to a system, a monitoring system, with Tyco. And I believe that, like you see there, there's a step, maybe a little step in there, and that, so that's about a $15,000 year addition, and you might be seeing in the actual, there was maybe part of it went into place, and then another part went into place. I think that's why you see it go up as well, because I think it was a contract addition, but the contract addition, I think, was only a 3 percent. I think it was, I think we're seeing there as the addition of Tyco monitoring your alarms.
Okay.
Okay, just one point. From fifteen sixteen to sixteen seventeen, it went up more than.
I think that was the new contract, if I'm not mistaken.
So back in the day, you used to be, you used to run all your emergency alarms through a system that we, our town, all our town alarms through a system that was over at the facility that we owned and operated. And the dispatch guys had to administer it. They weren't real. They didn't really like that too much. Times if you didn't get the error, the possibility that reporting would go down, life safety could be a concern because you actually pay for the housing authority as well as the school. So we monitor all those components. So we switched over to a, a system, a monitoring system with Tyco. And I believe that, like you see there, there's a step, maybe a little step in there. And that, so that's about a fifteen thousand dollar year addition. And you might be seeing in the actual there was maybe part of it went into place and then another part went into place. I think that's why you see it go up as well, because I think it was a contract addition. But the contract addition, I think was only a three percent. I think it was, I think we're seeing there is the addition of Tyco monitoring your alarms.
Okay.
That's a five-year lock.
Kitchen? Sure.
So in regard to the dispatch system, do, are we assured now that we have no, I guess what we call, even after they're dead zones, we're, we're alive everywhere throughout the town?
There was one area that they had some concerns about. But I wouldn't call it a dead area, but it was weaker. And I think better answer would probably come from Chief Shea.
It's too bold. There's the fire side, which we're currently operating on, which we really have very limited areas that we're concerned about. We do have some concerns that could be developed, which we're gonna do here. We voted that way. It has to do with buildings of that size blocking our ability to talk, if we're in underground parking. So fire's good. The police side is a whole new system. And we really have to go based on stuff, nothing to test. So based on what, what role and the contract has shown, there should be good coverage, as good as they have now, hoping for better. But really, all that's gonna happen in the future. And there's all kinds of things that involve in that, in that contract or in that upgrade that are going to, you know, help provide the dozen, do they have to provide coverage? At the current, it's not that.
So we won't know until we actually go live in the system. Is there, I guess the next question that would come to mind is, is there a backup plan if on day one there are areas that can't be reached or, or people that can't get, uh, viable communication?
There is a backup dispatch.
They can use your existing frequency. The nice thing about it is that they, the police department has brought their multi-frequency radio. So they can currently work now with the same radio when we work on ninety-five megahertz. So they can actually switch over and go back to their main operating frequency, which technically won't be taken down.
They'll still stay live.
So there's some redundancy in the system. It'll stay live, so hopefully, that's kind of part of that system.
And then moving forward, will we need more tower space?
Not that we're being told at this point. I see Shea, Chief Shea saying no as well.
The tower's been reconfigured and reinforced to a percentage greater than what we need, which is more than expected. We do, we're doing engineering work on it. And that includes all the updated equipment that needs to be put on for the new system. Including any retro or whatever the fire department needs. So we're doing that.
Thank you. Thank you. Police department, page fifty-one. Any questions? Rick, in regard to dispatch, if you look under accomplishments, at least for police, we have listed the number of calls that, four thousand eight hundred eighty-six calls. So those would be the calls that are recorded by the, typically by the dispatch center, because that doesn't include walk-ins. And for the fire department, I don't know if we put that in the narrative this year, but we have that information. We could get that for you. Just to give you an idea, they do give us a report every month from the dispatch center as far as the number of calls that are conducted.
I would just, I'd raise the same question about the, the fuel. It just, we, we had two years where we used about twenty-four thousand. We budgeted for forty-four thousand this year. And according to my numbers, which might not be accurate, we're gonna use about twenty-three thousand. So roughly what we used the other previous two years, but yet we're budgeting for forty thousand. That's a pretty, you know, big jump.
There is one more vehicle, I know, that's on the road, because we now have twelve officers. There were eleven. But that's, that's just one aspect. Tom, anything you want to comment on in addition?
Yeah, I mean, last year there were a few officers down. I'm worried because we had two guys in the academy, people retired. So we had a little bit less people on the road. And again, I guess before, I mean, if you go back to the third year, I think we were up near, you know, the thirty or forty range. So it, it all depends on what the gasoline price is. We don't have a lot of gasoline prices. Gasoline price last year was a few dollars. And when I did it before, it was forming around that same area. Now we're up in the, over the tubes. We didn't have to take the lock in the tubes to do that, but it's, um, we've been monitoring and trying to see if it's going to back down. If it doesn't, it pops up and you don't lock, then you're left out with, you know, you don't have enough money. So that's, those numbers are a budget, usually, probably like I said.
I keep the previous year's budgets in my book. And fourteen fifteen, the actual was forty-two, five forty-two. And then as we see fifteen sixteen, it was twenty-three, nine seventy-five. And then sixteen seventeen, we have that there.
Twenty-three, eight ninety-four, yeah. Well, fourteen fifteen was before oil crashed.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, it was as high as a hundred and forty dollars a barrel and now it's trading like sixty to sixty-five dollars a barrel. And barring some calamity, it's not projected to go up much.
Yep. Weekly, we are checking these numbers. If we can fine-tune them, we certainly will. But at this point, we don't have a fixed number, a locked number. Because it had been going up, now it's starting to go down again, the numbers that we're getting from our vendor.
So the town was better off just playing the market, I take it?
Some years.
Recently?
Well, this is for next, this for next year.
Well, no, we just had, you know, we, we, in the past, we blocked, so the price was always, like, we were able to monitor it, you know, when prices dropped. The letter call-ups, the prices dropped, we locked. It just happened three times, like two or three times in a row, that worked. When the bids came in this time, you know, they came, I think they came in on oil, oil and diesel in my head. I didn't remember. They were at twenty-five percent higher than the lock. And then they, and as the span of the lock crept up, it kept creeping upward. So we, we have the vendor on a differential and we have ability to lock at the approved prod rate on the gas, on the oil and diesel. But we just don't feel it's appropriate on the lock.
Oh, okay, otherwise you're paying the market price.
Right, so we, you know, don't lock and then all of a sudden something, you either consider the war or some disaster, it flips up, it flips, the price flips up to three or four dollars. Now you're paying the market.
So I take it you're watching the market and if it's, you deem it's appropriate to lock in, you're gonna lock in at a price?
That's it, I believe, we're doing it.
Any other questions on the police department? Emergency management on page fifty-three. There are some changes in line items, but the bottom line remains the same. Building department. While we expect extra work in this department, we're going to be running it not through this budget, but rather, rather as a more contractual basis. As we may need to have additional building official time. But I didn't want to put it in as a position, because that becomes sometimes difficult then to, to deal with when you don't need that work anymore. On the next page, public works director. There may need to be some changes in this, on this page in the process of still interviewing for the position. And so I don't have a good number, but I suspect that that may change slightly. So the highway division. There are nine positions full-time, correct, Tom? And that, there is one position that is vacant. We're gonna reopen it and it will be filled in time for honor before the first of the year. Vehicle maintenance division. There's little change other than a slight salary change, slight reduction in the equipment repair rental. Slight change in equipment supplies. Point oh-seven percent change.
I just have a question on that and maybe, Tom, you can answer this. And it's probably an estimate that you have out there, but I notice in the overtime account, in two thousand fifteen sixteen, it was sixteen ninety-four and then it went up to twenty-two forty-three. This year, we're expecting to spend around thirty-five hundred, but next year it'll be four thousand. Not that that's a big difference overall, but how do you, how do you come to that figure?
Currently, we're already over budget for this year.
Okay.
During the budget, it's just, that was a request from the director. It was, you know, those are utilized to, you know, maybe the mechanics often are utilized to prepare for, we're having to get the vehicle ready for snow and the world, as well as other operations during the year. And sometimes those are on clock hours, start to get there.
And I assume if we get snow every day like we've been getting, we'll need to repair those trucks. Thank you very much.
Page sixty-three, town engineer. Any questions on this page?
No, well, I was just curious, what, what was that a year ago, that big number for public safety and public works engineering?
Well, there was public, which line item?
Thirty-eight oh-oh-three.
And then thirty-eight oh-oh-one.
Rick, was that the year that was stormwater permit?
We had quite a time with the, with the, a number of permits. Pay-to-do, DDEP now is changing their regulations and we should see a number of increases coming this coming year. DDEP is increasing their permit fees, their DDEP is increasing their permit requirements. We need now to use, well, that year we had, we had quite a bit of work that DDEP requested. We need our engineer to do the work for us.
So. So then I guess the question becomes, is, is our budget proposal realistic?
What I can tell you is that it comes in stages. For example, some of the permits, our two-year permits, now the frequency that, it used to be five-year permits, now it's two-year permits. And they changed our, our regulation and requirements, for example, for the reservoir dam where the state keeps installing that dam at their cross. Once every, three or four years, and then they place dollars, place the burden upon the owners of the dam and the requirement to inspect them every year. So get ready. The cost is just gonna keep going and going and going until somebody gets real in the state. That's what it's about.
Thank you.
There also would have been some work that year, perhaps, in terms of the development proposals, because he would have been reviewing those as well.
Yeah, okay.
Probably not under that line item.
No, not that line item, but that year.
It would have been, yes, there, under, under other line items, you could see.
Yep.
That varies.
That varies, right.
Susan?
Yes?
Back on fifty-nine under highway.
Yes, fifty-nine?
Yeah, line item sixty-nine, zero-zero-one. Rick, on the street signs, I, I was under the impression we would start to go down on this, but you can educate me. I, I know we had to switch out the concrete posts and put up the new street signs. And it, and it looks like we spent, we budgeted, I'm not sure what we budgeted, but we spent about ten thousand this year, actual, and we're budgeting ten thousand for next year. What's, what's the driving force?
Pretty well completed with the changeover required by the feds of all our signage, which goes from concrete to what we had to new steps. So we're pretty well there. We have some signage that is left to replace. All signage has been changed. In addition, there's requests all the time for new signs. As we look at complete streets and we look at safety, we know there's requests to add a sign, add another sign, put a sign, add a sign, add a fence sign. So, you know, if we kind of base that on, on the past, and as you see, it was sixteen eight ninety-nine. The actual was eleven seven ninety-eight. I don't know where we're at, I'm sure I can tell you if you wanted to know, but I think we've expended most of our money. We're not quite yet completely with the changeover at all.
I just didn't know if this was where we could start to reduce it to say five thousand. I know signs are expensive. I bought one of these signs.
I think after this year, I hope, hopefully after this year, we have completed the changeover. And once we've changed them all over, then it's pretty much by request for additional.
Yeah, we already did ninety-two this year, ninety-two seventy-nine, so. We already did ninety-two seventy-nine, so we're pretty much at that number for this year.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was expecting.
And a, a lot of that was part of the changeover, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious if, if, for example, we had five thousand bucks.
Yes, again, it's another federal debt.
I'm looking.
It's another federal debt.
Thank you.
Page sixty-five, street lighting. There's no increase for this one?
Susan, on that one, we locked, we locked something. It meant we switched to LEDs and.
We did, yeah.
What's the, what is this program and what are the steps?
Well, it's, it's pretty much finished. They, Eversource put in the LED lights, Ben. They charge you a little bit more because of the installation of the new lights. But Tom has reported to us that the actual usage is down. So that's why we're predicting that even though rates may be going up, because we're using less, it should cost about the same. So that's our best estimate at this point.
So the add-on to the bill is gone now? We've paid that off or no?
I think it may be on an, on a monthly basis when, like, they've changed. Tom, do you know if they, if that was a one-time or is that something that they're asking us to pay overtime? I honestly don't remember. But I know that there was a slight cost to installation.
Yeah, and from what I've seen, they, they add something on for a year or two and then it'll drop. But I don't know if that's what you, what we went with.
Think so. When you put, get a new light, an actual, put an actual, brand-new one, that runs a certain amount of time that you pay for that. But these, I believe there was a fee associated with it and now the usage is, is better. Anything you want to add to that, Tom?
Are they all?
The ones that may not be LED, Rick, are the ones that the state owns or does the state?
There are many lights in town that are not LED, for example, you know, howling country, you know, you know, the locations. And again, a while back, we revisited, eliminating some streetlights. Didn't go over very well. Because many duplicate lights, intent spent, that.
That's where you could go through. Rick did a whole analysis of that.
We'll revisit that again.
I was surprised too during that. I remember that. And I was surprised that the. I was surprised too, during that, I remember that, and I was surprised that the, honestly, but my point was, if we still have some that haven't.
We have many, we have many non-LEDs.
Is that something we could look at, Susan?
Sure.
You know, doing a, a second wave, obviously LEDs are the way to go.
You like them?
Oh, I think they save money, and I like saving money.
Well, Susan, isn't, or, Tom, isn't, doesn't the utility company have the upgrade program? I mean, they have it for.
Yes.
For businesses, they probably have it for streetlights, where.
Rick, Rick, Cal State.
The Rams, um, call that various towns, for example, we were notified on a major project, because we were about, more or less, a little longer.
Longer, I think, Rick.
They contacted us and said we have, we got a special one, more or less, if you'd like to take advantage of it, you know, you'll do the following lights. I'm not sure if there's an ongoing program, the neighbor will be, I'm not aware of it.
They told us they would do all the lights in town.
I, I remember you saying that at a meeting, and I remember there were, we then re-change some of them because they were too bright.
Yes. They lowered the wattage, so the ones they put in were lower than the, than those initial ones. I'll call them and ask Rick, um, Rick or I will call and ask, and find out.
I just think that'd be a nice program to do next year, that could hopefully save us money.
Yeah, and it, you know, some towns have bought their streetlights, we did not buy our streetlights. When you buy them, you're then responsible for the repair, the upkeep, and when they're damaged, like in accidents. Right now, if ours are damaged, or they go out, Eversource repairs them.
And.
We don't own them.
On that, Tom, if you could just find out, the system we had in place now for those upgrades, whether it added to the monthly, I'd be curious, or is it a one-time fee, you know, to, to upgrade the lights, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, I'll look into that, Ben, I know I had something on that.
Thank you.
I'm happy that it's staying the same, at least, and not going up as it did.
Well, we want to see it go down.
Okay.
Because the LEDs will use a lot less electricity.
Yep.
I've actually had electric, electric bills go down.
That'd be great.
So it's, it's out there, we just have to ask the, we have to ask the right people for that question.
And maybe put more in, if they haven't all been, we'll look into that. Grounds Maintenance, on page sixty-seven, is the next department. The grounds department takes care of all the town and border bed properties, as well as all the sports fields, and other needs as presented, that, that's described on page sixty-six. One position is in the Board of Education budget, and we pay a small stipend for that person to do supervision of the other employees in terms of grounds maintenance.
I'm just curious, I think back on the Highway Department, I saw the overtime was about, yeah, ninety-two hundred, and the overtime for this is about twelve thousand two hundred, and I'm sure it's explainable after-hours activities, but could somebody tell me?
Mr. Johnson's here.
What was the number?
The entire Highway Department has under ten thousand in overtime. Your, your department is twelve thousand two hundred, I'm just curious.
Because the highways overtime, that's separate budget, I believe, for snow, right?
Yes, it does.
So that's what you're not seeing is snow.
That helps me out a lot.
That's coming.
The one there for mine is everything.
Okay.
Snow, or anything that's added to the whole year. The O thirty-eight account could show overtime for highway.
Okay. Thank you.
Building Maintenance? Page sixty-nine.
I think the, the biggest question that I, I've seen, and I've seen it as a thread, is it seems like our cell phone costs are up. I'm not sure if there was a switch to a different type of cell phone, or, I'm not sure if we can look at things like, you know, buying bulk minutes, which different plans offer, things of that nature, but it seems like phones and cell phone costs are up.
We do buy bulk, correct, Tom?
Yeah, we look for the Verizon, you know, Verizon one, we put with the contract, the state contractors, also associated contract, so, I think, over there, we, 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 around, like I said, the sixty-three E normally, the contract does move, there's some of the systems there, we did have to add a couple, we added the voice on from the Highway Department, and as things move more technologically, it's time to understand who's getting the devices, the cost, people may need more license, there are only a limited number of people that actually get devices, and then those devices are administered, and, you know, there's a pool of purchase, the, the, you know, the cost, the, the, we, the budget is flat, and the, and the expense has been reasonably around the down. Telephone, telephone is, in mind, it's not only telephone, but internet, your T-one line, so we have a T-one line, and David, you know, he wants to try to increase that, we have a block of IP address, it's a dedicated line, he claims that there needs to be an upgrade on that, to another piece that caused roughly, I want to say a couple hundred dollars a month, increase, they're not implementing yet, but definitely drawing, it's on the website, it's announced. So David, he's here, he's speaking up, but he's here about, that's what's needed, and on the other side here, the intent, you have to, telephone line, now we, many years back, we were paying maybe in the sixties, we went, it was probably near the fifty, sixty thousand, we went through restructuring, went through state connected contract, rolled that telephone number, that was down, that contract, the T-one line has expired, there really is no other contract, so you're able to stock with Verizon on that one, and then you kind of get with his, because it's already constructed, it's already constructed, it's hard to.
Is that related to the reason why it's two thousand more you anticipate?
Yeah, I mean, actually, I, I'd agree with the fact, we've got to get rid of that. I mean, I understand the IP address, because if you lose those. Yeah, that, which is hard to, it's actually hard to get, you know, not to mention that. Yeah, and you'd have to reassign them, and it just, that would cause issues, the.
Remapping the network is a big concern, because, but an IP address would be causing remapping, just to give it, uh, it's all the cost.
But obviously, yeah, but that T-one is restrictive when we come in, so it does make sense to do the upgrade stock.
I'll upgrade it up, I need a ten mag.
Ten mag will make a bit, yeah. Okay.
Don't increase your install, and then it's, it will go down. We have good, nothing to see in, in pound gas, so I think it's, it's a location as well, so they're there, uh, it's just pound gas, it's, it's, and, and also long distance is Verizon, so long distance is associated with, uh, agreement with the T-one, so that's clear long distance. So you have volunteer as your base provider, Verizon's your long-distance provider, long distance is the T-one through Verizon, you have a redundant, flowing, uh, pound gas line, you have quicker speed internally, and then we also utilize a number of, I see.
Okay, thank you.
Susan?
Yes?
Line item thirty-one thousand, it might be for Tom, what does this thirty-two thousand five hundred encompass? It says contract service, what, what is that?
Which page are you on?
Uh, I'm on the same page, sixty-nine. Line, line item thirty-one hundred.
Yes, A B C, it's fire extinguisher, it's, why, there's any number of things that we repetitiously use over the years, we could, that separate an honor, it makes sense to keep them up in the service pack. You know, we treat, for example, the heating system, we run, they, they run properly, that's probably what, a dozen or more vendors have done with the service pack, the biggest of which is, you know, we have about seven or five other speeds, and.
All right, on line item sixty-two zero zero two, the water and sewer, I'm just curious, how'd you pick that number, and why, why is it down from sixteen seventeen, I see sewer and water going up, but I'm just curious. Yes.
It's pretty possible.
It's down a little, and I've, I've been anticipating an increase from, you know, just seeing where the water and sewer is.
Same rate?
Okay, so you're going by the rate, not, okay.
Pretty much, and that's, you know, again, years ago, we, that was a day when we didn't heat it, for example, we didn't, we didn't get the sign, the town actually built itself. Again, again, rates have a difference.
We had mineralized a company, uh, the fire museum, in like, I believe this year, like the end of last year or this year, so I think that was kind of something that we thought that'd be that cost, it was staying flat. So like last year, eighteen seventeen, there was water going into the fire museum, it would have been charged, we need to mineralize, I'd shut that down.
Yeah, that was last year, that was very, 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 very.
That's why we were, that's why we were high. We'd ask them, why are we high in seventeen?
Yeah.
Or, why are we staying flat? We stayed flat because we thought we were going to eliminate the water usage, the company of the fire.
You know, sixteen seventeen, we're twenty-seven seventy.
Yeah, so you're thinking, why wouldn't you go up?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I'm just.
Yeah. And it's all a function of, you know, actually, that, that number would, I'm surprised, there would be more of a difference, usage in the buildings, certainly in the towns, sometimes we have exhausts.
Right, and on a few of the, I think the Highway Department, they went down also back a few pages, I would, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out the reasoning when I think water and sewer rates are going up.
Part of it is conservation, part of it is, you know, usage, just, just paying attention.
Okay. No, yeah, no, I like those answers.
Not a big change.
Thank you, thank you.
Snow removal, seventy-one.
Found my overtime.
Yep, we're a little over budget this year.
I was trying to figure out how he's doing it on nine grand, I was going to pull you aside, pick your brains.
There it is, forty-eight five for next year, and fifty-three five for road materials, which we kept plot, but we don't know, you know, that's our, that's our best estimate.
So, Susan, how come road materials, though, are up significantly from fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen?
Because of storms. Rick, you have any comment on that?
Or maybe that's a Rick question?
Yep.
You know, that's, that's a good question, looking at the numbers here, um.
That's salt, Rick.
You know, what, what doesn't make sense, for example, sixteen seventeen, we had a lot more overtime and not as much, and it's somewhat a function of the price of salt, like right now, the price of salt is, raw salt is good, so we're going to stop, and build some next year. It's a function of how much I have left in my materials, sometimes I'll, I'll load the building for the next season, it's like, you know, I would. So I don't, that's a, that's a good question. This year, what did you say, Tom, we're at about seventy-five thousand milligrams, so it's again, it's a seasonal way to look back at fifteen sixteen, we're at forty-six million.
I think we, we bought a bunch of salt that one year, and all of our friends at the facilities, the sand salt storage situation, so at one point, there was a great price on salt, when the salt shortage was coming up, so there, there's a very big concern, we can get salt for a while, so when we had an opportunity to get salt, contain salt, and then I think there was a mixture, and then one year it wasn't too bad, so we still had some salt from that, we bought another half, the requirement, we had to hit required amount of tonnage, so we had to hit that, now this year it's been rough, so we've used probably much of the, whatever we had, and then we have the required, that's where I think you're seeing the steroids, like the road materials, here in, over seventeen, here we're thirty-five gallons.
We buy salt through the state contract.
Okay.
The average is usually around seven hundred and fifty dollars, by what we have in the turn of the space.
Anything else? Page seventy-three, Planning Department. Page seventy-seven, The Planning and Zoning Commission. There is an increase, as you discussed last workshop, within the mid-state, it's not mid-state anymore, it's now Lower Connecticut River Valley Council Governments, and that's a function of reduction in their funding from other sources, including the state, and so they're asking for higher dues. They're going from ten thousand seven hundred to eleven thousand four hundred fifty-three.
Susan, why did the payroll on zoning enforcement, it's jumped considerably from previous years?
I don't think we had a zoning.
That's probably because we didn't have one, right?
Right.
And then, on the, on page seventy-three, the same thing with the planning consultant, the plan consultant, three-one oh oh two, went from forty-eight hundred to zero to eighty-five hundred, and now it's staying at eighty-five hundred?
Here, I think, do you remember Tom in seventeen, sixteen seventeen? Might have been cut that year, the plan consultant.
The Planning Department.
Page seventy-three.
One year he had no number in there.
Right.
No, it's not, that, that was again, that's actual, so you only need a plan consultant that year, you don't need a plan consultant.
Okay.
So in, in sixteen, I believe Jacobson had a study for us, so we used him for study.
Okay.
And the reason, is that budget's always been around sixty-five hundred as a budget, and we had added two thousand in, and that was supposed to be an engagement that, for the planning department, works with the vendor that does the, the, you know, conservation and development, and they're supposed to continually update it every year, and I think we just approved that maybe last year, so that's why you didn't need it this year, probably next year, you think you're going to start lending that.
Okay.
For them, and then if there's a planned matter that's needed, that, that is not replaced, they get charged here, is replaced, and charged with different.
We also took the Economic Development, which used to be in, in Economic Development Commission.
Yeah.
Page, or, I think that's the page it was on, and we moved it into this department.
But, isn't there a page?
Mary's position.
Oh, 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 okay.
Susan?
Yes?
On line item eighty-six zero one five, the mid-state.
Yes.
Do we have other options, going, going back to, for, two thousand fourteen, we were at sixty-two hundred and change, and now we're budgeting eleven thousand four hundred. That's a significant increase in a short amount of time, and I, I know you mentioned the state.
We were subsidized, Ben, for a while, because mid-state was cheaper than the Lower Connecticut River Valley, the, the Estuary Council, and when we merged, they subsidized with some of the residual dollars from mid-state, those mid, middle town, towns. Then, I believe, in seventeen, and now this year, that subsidy went away, so we're paying full, full freight now.
I guess, so, back to my question, are there other options, and what do we get for this, and do we need to be part of this?
We can invite the executive director to come in and talk with you, he should come up, his name is Sam Gold, he can come up and speak with us about this. Typically, you're in a. you're in a region, which we're in the lower Connecticut River Valley council governments, with the other sixteen, I think there's sixteen or seventeen towns, um, the Hartford, the general Hartford region is, um, not the region we've sel, been selected to go into, so OPM delineates what these different, uh, planning agencies will be, and we're in this particular one.
Then we have to.
It's our geographic region, I mean, it makes.
It's our geographic region.
Yeah, everybody subscribes?
Yeah, not everybody is as active, but they all, I presume, pay their dues.
Okay, so it's a mandate?
I don't know if I call it a mandate, but it's if you wanna participate in transportation grants, transportation initiatives, we're supposed to be doing a corridor study between East Hampton and Portland, so we applied together to get that grant through this agency, the, the agency has the grant, and they should be implementing that, and that is to look at traffic patterns, uh, development patterns along sixty-six, they're doing one on Route eighty-one and, and Clinton as well. That's just one example of what they do, and then that lotsit program, which we have not participated in, but some of the other agencies have, um, they write those grants, and then they select the top two or three, and then they send them to the state, and then the state decides which ones they're gonna fund, so that's kind of the way the conduit works for DOT projects, not all DOT projects, but many of them go through the council governments. And then there's, um, Rick, what's the other, the, the big book that's, uh, the planned improvements to roads, the, the road improvement plan?
Road improvement. I mean, you get your money's worth.
Right. I think we should invite him here, though, and talk with you, so that you can understand a little better what they do, and he can understand a little more what you're looking for. I mean, frankly, I'd ask them to help with the, particularly with Brainerd Place, um, but it's taken so long to get this corridor study finally established, um, I got word this week that now finally the contract has occurred, I think the interviews were last year.
Wow, takes a little while.
Takes a little while.
My first question would be, I just, hopefully the big jumps are done in their, in their increases.
I don't know, I wouldn't guarantee it, no.
Are they still getting state money?
Well, I think, uh, they're still getting state money, they get a per, uh, sort of a per person amount, um, so it depends on your population what you get, and then it also depends on your population, how much you pay in dues, so that's how they base that, um, but I would not anticipate that the state would increase their funding, in fact, there was a bill in the legislature recently that they were looking to maybe change the whole way they're gonna do planning, with, particularly with transportation, and increase staffing, um, one proposal, I don't know that it's gonna go through, a proposal was to add staffing at Office of Policy Management, and reduce staffing at some of the councils of government, and yet they've been promoting these councils of government to be the way to plan.
Sounds like we have to meet Mr. Gold.
Yeah, I think that would be valuable.
Thank you.
Make that note, Ben. You're also welcome to go to the meetings, they're typically the last Wednesday morning in the month, and they're held in Essex, and they start at nine o'clock. Be interesting for you to go, I think, if you can afford the time. So what page are we on, Jim?
Seventy-nine, zoning board of appeals.
All right, anything on that page?
Not much there.
Not much there, inland wetlands, similar, not too much there, no change, conservation commission, no change.
Susan, sorry.
Yep.
On seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
The le, the legal expenses for that board, is that just under the gen, the town?
Yes.
Okay, and did we?
Yes, yep.
Does attorney Pilsley, is he no longer their attorney?
I don't think we've used him in a while, Ben.
Okay, I didn't know if we got a new attorney or not.
Nope.
Okay.
We haven't had, as far as I know, a need for an attorney.
Why do we have, we hadn't had court transcriptions until this year, as a line item?
We didn't, we didn't need them.
Okay.
So, I don't know that we've needed them this year either, so that might not occur.
That might.
We just have that, uh, in case we need it.
If we don't use it, and it just.
We're at zero right now.
Right, so I don't, we haven't so far needed it, but it's there because on occasion we do.
Okay.
The economic development commission, page eighty-five, there is no recommended changes there. Kitch, do you wanna say anything about that, the marketing program, I don't think that there's been much, too much this year.
So far, not too much this year, we did, um, talk to some of shop owners, some of the, some ideas about, um, improving the exterior, the county of all the people, the regular marketing for the awards, acknowledging of their participation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Capital expenditure commission, five hundred dollars, I don't think they use that, 'cause I think Mr. Agalati takes a minute. Thank you, Mike. Um, within the health department, um, there is a slight reduction, um, I need to verify that on page eighty-nine, that in this budget was the initial number, but that's gone down slightly, so I, I need to ma, I'll make a note and get that to you, it's not substantial, but it is, um, a couple thousand, I think.
What's the reasoning for that?
Because the board wanted them to reduce their budget, so they did, and they had a good year this last year, and their reserves were built up sufficiently, so they were able to reduce some of their dollar spend.
Thank you.
Yep. We did have Don Mitchell come a couple times, not recently, but we can have him come as, he's our health director, and we will invite him to come to do an update as well.
Hasn't been a year yet, has it?
Well, I mean, for the new board, the new board members.
I'm just curious, it's been, it's been a little while.
Been a little while.
Yeah.
I think he came in September, may, he might have been at the meeting where we voted on the, uh, not the bond, uh, what do we go on, September, there was another thing, I, I know I've seen him, I, I was in here for something.
But I don't know that he, did he make a presentation, did he talk about something?
He gave an update.
Okay, do you want him to come? He doesn't have to.
I'm okay, unless you know something we don't.
No, everything seems to be going well, those board meetings are the last Tuesday, right Charlie, don't you come to those Tuesdays of the month? Sometimes they're held here, um, we try to go to the different towns so that people have a chance to go to the meetings, um, Hebron, Marlborough, East Haddam, East Hampton, Colchester, and Portland. Pretty, pretty good sized geography.
Yeah.
And Liz, Liz Davidson is our sanitarian that is typically here, but Don Mitchell also helps us, she's in the land use department.
Susan, I.
Yes.
Have a question.
I see a page coming over here. All right, Tom has the numbers, go ahead, Rick.
Um, just an example, if, if, like, there's three thousand budgeted for economic development, and all these town commissions have five hundred, a thousand, whatever.
Yep.
So if they don't use the money during the budget year, that, that just stays in our general fund, or?
It would, um, if it doesn't need to be allocated to another department, 'cause another department may have gone over their budget, um, if it doesn't, then it falls to, um, fund balance, and so we end the year typically in the positive, I don't know about, not this year, because of the cuts in our revenue.
Yeah.
But those dollars become part of the, um, I wouldn't call it a surplus, but I'd call it, um, um, revenue that exceeds expenditures, this year it was about four hundred thousand, June thirty seventeen.
Okay.
And then it goes to fund balance, and that's when we talk about having fifteen to seventeen percent of our budget in reserves, or I call it the savings account, the rainy day fund.
Right, okay, so it doesn't just.
It doesn't disappear.
It doesn't disappear, or it doesn't just get, oh, we gotta spend this because we're gonna, we, uh, I don't know, we didn't use it, we'll find some.
But you can see, some light items, um, are under, and some are over, so we would have to balance that out, we typically do that with what we call fourth quarter transfers, where you see where there's been overages and under expenditures, um, we've been fortunate the last several years that we have been, for the most part, um, finishing in the positive column, but as I said, this year we will not, because the revenues are down substantially from the state, remember, we did not choose to do a supplemental tax bill after the budget was passed on, on Halloween, so those dollars will need to come from somewhere, and we're working to limit expenditures, as well as, uh, look at how other revenues may be able to help us accommodate.
Yeah, okay.
Anything you wanna add to that, Tom? So, back to page eighty-nine, rather than one oh seven nine oh five, it should be one oh four three five zero.
Do you have the percentage on that, or no, Susan?
Uh, three point one six.
Uh, three point one six.
Sorry.
That was quick. You're good.
Thank you, Jim. So that's, that is better. The total budget, just so that, in case you're interested, is one million fifty-three thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars for the Chatham Health District. Just pass that around so you can see.
If you can double that budget, I'll be okay with it.
Yeah, we'll double the zero on that one. On page ninety-three, I do know that, um, and I know Mary Contis here, she told me that, um, account number eight six oh one nine, we do not need to fund that, that's five hundred dollars, where's Mary, right, Mary?
Right, as well as eight six oh oh seven.
Eight six oh oh s, oh.
First one.
First one.
Why's that?
They no longer exist.
Will sex behavior, both the family.
That's not, that's not middle sex behavior, the, um, family access is not.
Yeah, the middle sex behavior, it was, it's family access, so usually family access can change the middle sex behavior.
So what's the verdict?
If, if we, as well, we need to find middle sex.
I think we give it to, what we do is we give it to Middle Sex Hospital. We don't give it to Family Access, it goes to Middle Sex Hospital.
Seven gave it in Nashville, it's all been here. I actually said, could have even asked for it last year.
Because they, or didn't, didn't.
All right, board, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna reduce it, or do you wanna leave it?
Every little bit helps.
All right, so we'll reduce, uh, for mix act, five hundred, and, uh, family access five hundred.
Susan, I'm, I'm back on this, um, from Chatham Health, it's just.
Yes.
Basically, it's based on the population, our fee?
Yes, Ben.
Thank you.
Yep, and then they're also fee driven agency, as you know, so they have dues from each town, they get state money, and then they also pay, or they also get fees for services rendered.
Now you're making me ask another question, if it's.
Yeah.
Population driven, and its cost the same as every other town, why did our number run out?
Because our population may have gone down, take a look at it, does it, does it list for last year?
It does.
Our population has gone down slightly, thank you.
So it's one number per population.
Yeah, we have a ninety-three, what is it?
Ninety-three ninety-one.
Ninety-three ninety-one?
Twenty fifteen that was.
It used to be a little higher, I didn't hear you Ralph, I'm sorry.
That was twenty fifteen, it was ninety-three ninety-one.
Yeah, they don't, they don't use current numbers, but I remember it was ninety-five hundred at one point, Ben.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, oh, they use health department numbers.
Health department.
State health department, right? They use state health department numbers, not, they don't actually count all of us.
Um, I have a question on social services.
Yes.
So, we have twenty-five hundred dollars for fireworks and fair?
Yes.
So, what do we, is that for, like?
Donation.
That's just donation, to support it?
Yeah, honestly, that typically goes to help defray the cost of police service.
I was gonna ask if.
Yeah, that's typically what that goes to, the transfer typically, right, Tom? Yes, sir.
Now, do you know if we're, are we having fireworks?
Um, I know they're having a fundraiser on Saturday, if you wanna go to, to the show up at the high school, they're gonna be modeling towns, you know, Joe Dean does that show, depends on how much money they have, they've been trying to do every other year, um, because of the weather, that's what happened, um, however, they need every dollar they can get if they're gonna hold it, so the twenty-five hundred, if you stay that every year, then they put that toward their account, if they don't spend it, it goes to them, and.
I see, for.
Depending on whether they'll have fireworks, if they have enough money, I think they'll have them, it all depends on how their fundraising goes, the own, pretty much that's the only amount that we give to them. Memorial Day Parade is five thousand dollars, Veterans Activities is four thousand dollars, Emergency Shelter is three thousand dollars, uh, the Red Cross Dial-A-Ride is twenty-nine thousand five hundred, dial, um, Rural Transit Program is eleven thousand dollars, I can tell you the Middletown Area Transit District is having a lot of funding problems, primarily because of their subsidies from state, uh, transportation, and it's up in the air as to whether they're gonna be, uh, fully funded, they were looking at a fifteen percent reduction, which would mean less bus service and probably less Dial-A-Ride service, but I don't know yet, 'cause the legislature hasn't passed the budget. Any other items on this page? Uh, that page being ninety-three?
Well, I just have to say this, and I don't know, it's, as much as I've supported the fireworks and raised money for them when I had a business, it's like if we're so hitting such tough economic times, and, I don't know, cutting out things at schools and stuff that, like, I don't know, do we really need to give money to blow off fireworks? Um, just raising the question.
Sure.
And half the time.
But do you wanna comment?
I wanna tell you what that would buy in school supply.
Yeah, I don't, I missed, unfortunately, I missed your presentation last week, but, um, yeah.
Well, we can come back and visit that?
Yeah, I think we should, yeah.
Um, senior center, page ninety-five. Yeah, electricity went from budget this year, eleven, to thirteen thousand, and part of that is, is we discussed at our workshop, due to, um, the large fans that are used when flooding occurs, as well as that building gets a lot of use, besides the, um, eight-thirty to four-thirty timeframe, a lot of evening meetings, um, I had a meeting there this weekend, and the whole building was full, so that building does get a lot of usage, and that does increase electricity.
What's the process of the lights being, uh, inside of the building, where you go in?
Security.
During the day?
Should be off, Rick?
Are they new, they were surely, are they on during the day?
Yeah, they're on during the day.
Yeah, okay.
We'll shut them off. We'll shut them off. Thank you.
So, Susan, you feel that, so there's a pretty significant increase in electricity over the average?
Yes.
And that's because of, what, because of these fans, or?
Well, I'm just saying that contributes to it. Um, Tom also explained there is a food bank. So, I think they've added some refrigerators and freezers in the basement. Um, there's also a lot of usage in that building. The lights are on, and the comings and goings are frequent.
Have we, um, done the lighting audit on that building?
Yes. Right, Tom? That, that did some changes? We could do more. We can, we need to look at.
Do we call, I sent you an email on it?
Yes, yes.
They were just on through the lantern project, they should do four to five buildings. I don't remember.
That was one of, Senior Center, I think we relent, used the program on those buildings a couple times. It's usage, Senior Center, it's usage.
It's used a lot.
It's not the fan dryers when we, when we, when the thing's flooded, it's usage. That building, that Senior Center, it's used all the time.
So, we're increasing usage, then?
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Judging by the electricity numbers?
Yes, I think that's, I think that's.
What's driving it?
Increased electricity.
Right.
And as Tom indicated, the food, I think we'll find a food bank in that, probably freezer or.
No, that'll use the juice, yeah.
Yes.
Especially if it's single-phase power, which it probably is.
But Rick brings a good point forward, and that is that we do need to make a concerted effort toward, again, looking at any new programs for energy savings. Um, and I think looking at some ways of using more clean energy is something we need to do. So, that is something that we should definitely proceed with. And Rick gave me a contact to, um, to get in touch with.
Few solar, more solar panels in town, wouldn't be a bad thing.
Yeah. Although you have to watch the legislature, because they had another bill put forward where they were looking at, um, for those with solar panels. And again, these are proposals, so it could happen or not happen, whereby you would be charged a flat fee rather than what you're actually making. So, if they change the way that electricity is charged, that could definitely affect the solar industry. Have you seen that, Chris?
No.
That was something I just saw this week. I don't know that it has legs, that it will, that it will go anywhere, but it is something very disturbing for the, trying to save energy. They increased, increased the distribution, or, yeah, the base fee has been increased.
Yeah, the connect, the connection fee, and I think it's, they tried to go for twenty-six, right? And then it was brought up to nineteen and a half, or somewhere around there. But what was disturbing with that, um, is that when you looked at Massachusetts and other areas that haven't been deregulated, it's five, six dollars for a connection fee. So, we're already getting hit with high electric rates. And then, and you see these other issues.
And a lot of municipalities have a lot of solar panels. We do not have a lot, but it has proved to be savings for some of these communities. It's something we should look into, um, and certainly saving of energy is on the docket.
And defend.
And defend, that's right.
Put them in the retention pond at the high school.
Really, on holes?
No, really.
The ground mounts, the ground mounts.
It'll be all right.
You're talking about the ones that articulate?
Sure.
You're talking about like a solar farm?
Put pole right up in there? Sure we get an engineer to design it, and it'll work just fine? Doesn't take up any good land?
That, that's one of the things we need in Connecticut that hasn't gone through, too, is the, um, community solar, which would allow us to do that. With a lot of all the folks that have solar, um, that can't get it to their roof because of the trees, you can put it off-site.
You see in a lot of that in other states.
You see that in a lot of states. You drive, if you drive I-90, Massachusetts Mass Turnpike, you see it all over the place.
And they should do that. A lot of commercial buildings have these big roofs that would love to be the host of those panels. And I'm sure you could work it out.
As lights that are.
Okay. So far, I think you've saved about four thousand?
Ooh. Four thousand five hundred and fifty-five.
Yeah, how much?
Forty-five fifty-five. It'll get better.
That's if, that's if you're not taking my five thousand out of Rick's signs.
Well, we didn't take anything out of science yet.
That's true, huh? I'll celebrate over here.
Um, anything on municipal agent for the elderly? That is down six percent. Portland Library, page ninety-nine, very little change on this budget, zero point five percent change. In this case, electricity is down slightly.
Did this get the new heating units?
Rick, yes. HVAC units. They're not on the roof anymore.
What, what buildings do we have that aren't on natural gas? What do we have that's not on natural gas? Obviously, Company Three, yeah.
Transfer Station, Company Three.
Schools are on natural gases. Page one oh one, fringe benefits. I know there was a question on medical insurance, and we did check on the number, and there is no change.
Is that negotiated each year?
I don't know if I'd call it negotiated. There was a cap. There was a cap that we negotiated. Uh, the cap was fifteen percent. And it was determined that, that after bidding, that was the best deal. We've had some difficult years, um, and we look forward to better years.
How's that in relation to, isn't the Board of Ed contributions more than fifteen percent?
No, it's not, that's not, I don't mean the contribution. Ben, that was the increase in the, um, amount.
Okay. Thank you.
But they are bid together. The plans are slightly different, but they are bid together.
Yeah, I thought, I thought they were in line, but that's why, sorry, when you said.
We do use a broker, along with the Board of Education, um, and she does bid our product. And the bids have not been going well for this year. Did you want to say anything about that, Superintendent?
What does the, um, what does the employee contribute? A percentage? And that's the same with the town, too? That's part of the labor union contract?
The town is pretty much the same.
It's all bargain.
Collective bargaining? So, what are we running about for employee contract?
I'll get that for you.
It's also plan difference. All Board of Ed employees do not want to hide that.
Okay.
And it took a while to get there. There was, the spread when we started on the Board of Education. There were so many different things that were available to certain groups and not others, and it was very, very difficult to try to get.
Every time we negotiated contracts, we had to inch our way forward on different parts of the healthcare clauses that were in there. It's a very long process to get everyone, but we all follow the same design. There's just different cost sharing.
I think one of them had water aerobics in it, like when we started.
We're not going to, it's too late already.
It really did.
We're not, we're not gonna go there.
And the others didn't.
I will point out that, um. That, um, workers' compensation is a zero increase, which is good. And our, um, other insurance was, it was very good this year, too.
Were there any incidents for workman's comp last year?
I know this year, there is one that I'm thinking of, but our, on the general town government side, there may be some on the Board of Ed side. But nothing major in general government. There are numerous.
Normal amount?
We got a zero, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
That's kind of, that's your judgment. They're willing to offer a zero, that is a danger. We, we, I think next, I think that two, during the break, me and, uh, me and the, first one, Senior Lieutenant, set up a training for the Board of Ed, the custodial and maintenance in the area of town, staff are quite involved. For, uh, you know, some items that may be things that are possibly in general, it's not so weak. So, we set up a training with PERMA. PERMA's going out to run that training for the person here as well. That's because, you know, the reasons called out, it's open to the public, so it's a reasonable event. The other people, the PERMA members, will come through that. Those are the type of things that we do on the property and category. We have safety committee, both the town and the Board of Safety Committees. We work through, we talk about various risk factors. And those, here, with going for our, PERMA, uh, the work comp, or the, that we needed. We work through those, there are various other, uh, trainings that can occur. There is a portal that PERMA allows you to log into and just train. We're going to run some of that training as well. Um, you know, that's, that's, with healthcare, with very, 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 uh, professional worker on the, um, along this program. And works with, as I said, the, the, the Board of Ed as well. And it's great with people, and it's a lot of really good programs. Trying to wellness out in some different areas, when you find that, or risk areas within our plan. We, we, we use reports, you know, internally that have, that gives us a little bit of control, really kind of help. And she has a wellness fair coming up, probably next week. And there's, uh, she has, all those vendors coming. And it's a, it's a great thing for the, for the employees. They can come, they get information, they can learn. Uh, they can easily get some contacts of various things related to either. And then generally, what we usually do is you'll pick two or three areas that you'll have any trouble with, that Signor will be there. They'll be able to talk. Sunlight, our long-term disability provider will be there to give out. There are also our D, D providers, they'll be there. We'll have, uh, me, our four fifty-seven, four three provider for financial health. And, um, you know that there's some other, other, other type of vendors out there that need to be, low pressure, or working, uh, care inside, or some of those things like that. And that's all, we're through our, our Signor, our healthcare. Um, is our, is part of our wellness program, trying to give people, um, even still, and doing the right thing, you know, there's, and it's really the horrible program to have to, the, uh, the wellness members. And, um, as you see, you guys, they're really, they're staying up.
Yeah, I will point out that, you know, as we go through this, it's very, I think, good that the general town government and Board of Education, we do a lot of things together. You don't find that in every town. Uh, the grounds is a, is a merged department, if you would, um, in terms of work. And then, uh, our health insurance is bid together. Our liability accident and, um, what's the other? LAP, liability accident and.
Property.
Property is all bid together, um, as well as some of the staff that we share, in terms of the finance department in particular. We share a lot, payroll, as well as just general management of the, of the monies. We use the same, um, operating system, financial operating system, and other items as well. And I will say that one thing that's, that I learned this the other day, is just the proximity of having Philip's office across the hall from finance and my office really means that we can work together effectively. Rick?
That's, that's good, that's good to hear.
It is good.
Um, I was trying to get an idea, what, what? Does the town employee pay for any portion of their healthcare premium?
Yes.
And, okay, what type of percentage is it? Or is, or is that all over the place?
Well, Mary, do you know what, what, I believe, I know that fifteen percent is in my head, but I think it's gone up since I've looked at it. Because we did, we're not in the middle of negotiations this year.
All right.
So, it's up from there. I'm gonna look it up and get it back to you on the actual numbers.
Okay, and then, does, does the health insurance for the employee also cover their family?
Yes, depending on the individual. So, we offer insurance for no one. If they have a waiver and they have another access to health insurance, and they are given, depending on the bargaining unit, they're given, uh, a stipend if they don't take the insurance. But they can, individuals can take it as their own, they can take it as two people, or they can take it as a family.
And the price they pay varies depending on if it's their own, their spouse, or their family?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you look at the union contracts toward the end, the appendix includes all of the various aspects of the health, uh, package, as well as the amount that the employee contributes, and the amount that they pay when they go to the doctors, or the hospital, or the amount that they would pay, um, at any other facility, as well as what they would pay for prescriptions.
Okay. And one last thing here, what's longevity? What's this deal with this line item?
Longevity payments are paid for, um, employees as they reach certain milestones. If it's ten years, there's a certain amount that's given, fifteen, twenty years, and so forth. That's also in union contracts, and it is, um, on a, on a lesser basis, a smaller basis, directors also.
Is it a one-time payment, or is it?
Per year.
Per year?
Per year.
And then, it just, every year? Or do they get it at five years, and then, again, at ten years?
I think it's ten.
Every, every.
Starts at ten.
You get it every year.
Okay.
You start at ten, you get, or go to the next level, whatever the next level is, and then it goes to the next level.
The first select one doesn't get it.
Your management.
Right, special. Um, okay, are you ready to go on to debt service? Because, um, as, page one oh four, did I, what did I skip?
Skip one oh three.
Risk, risk management is also a zero percent change. That's the, um, liability, accident, and property.
Oh, boy, it jumped quite a bit from the previous years.
Yes. And we had claims.
Oh.
And it was mostly related to, um, flooding. Not flooding, excuse me, storms, storm water.
Funny thing about insurance, the more you use it, the more they charge you.
They wanted to go up, and, um, for this year, and I told them no.
Are you, can you change carriers? I mean, do you get, are you allowed to shop, shop it around?
You can.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, Mr. Robinson?
So, you're looking, you're saying it's going up. You're looking at expenses, expenses, they're about the same. One hundred and thirty-five, one hundred and thirty-three. So, we're staying right within that range. Well, you're seeing the difference is, of course, there's deductible, so we have to have some type of a self-insurance along that. So, that's thirty thousand in our self-insurance. But we have to have, so if something happens, or you don't, you have, first you have a deductible, you have to cover, you gotta have a little push in there, so.
So, that's why it went from one thirty-three to one sixty-two?
That's where the budget consistently is, one sixty-two.
Well, it's not, oh, I see what you're saying, okay. Because the other two years were what you actually spent.
Right.
Okay. So, you're building in a thirty thousand dollar. Oh, okay.
And we have to pay sometimes for certain claims, uh, percentage.
All right.
Any other questions on that?
Not on that.
Within debt service, as you know, um, we are, um, going to be doing quite a bit of work based on the bond that was passed in two thousand and sixteen, so in light of, um, some selectmen asked me to take a look at this number, um, in terms of how we might be able to mitigate impact for the budget, um, as you can see, we're on page one hundred and four, we haven't come up with too many reductions in expenditures, um, not that we can't go back and do more, but I did have, I called a meeting with our, uh, financial advisor, and Tom and I met with David Isenthal and his assistant to talk about how we might be able to manage our debt in a more cost-efficient way. So, in meeting with them, um, and looking at what's on the calendar for the projects, um, we determined that we could, um, issue the bonds, or have the bonds, um, issued in July, as opposed to May. The number that's in here, the four sixteen, four hundred, is based on getting the proceeds in May of this year, but if we wait a few, couple months, and we go into July, that payment would not be due until the next fiscal year, at which time, um, the bonds from other projects will be coming off the page, so that will help us. So, in terms of our, our payment, we can reduce this page by four hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars, cause that payment would go to the next year.
And that helps us get on to that other side of the, the debt curve a little bit more, too, which is good.
Susan, I don't follow, so that, would that change this eighty-three oh oh two bonds interest line on page one oh five?
Yes.
Okay.
And on page one oh four.
Yeah.
You see, the twenty twelve refunding of the Board of Education, nine point five, one million, high school, middle school, bond principal, a million dollars, bond interest, one thirty-nine, six twenty-five.
Right.
That stays the same, the nineteen ninety-nine general obligation bond and Board of Ed, seven point one, is a hundred and ninety thousand and seven, ninety-two fifteen.
Yeah, that stays.
That stays, and then the twenty eighteen general obligation town interest, that goes to zero.
So the nine point five and the seven point one, that's the outstanding?
Uh, no, those were the issuing.
Okay, where, where are we on the outstanding of those?
You'd have to look in your audit, right, Tom?
So Susan, that number, that four sixteen, four hundred, that doesn't show up again till next year's budget?
And you can see, too, Rick, the fire department ladder truck, that this is the last payment for that, so next year, that'll go off.
That goes off, okay.
Multi-year lease, five of five payments, that two seventy-two, that goes off. Multi-year equipment, it'll go to a third year next year, that will remain, that's what we just did.
Will that number stay roughly the same?
Roughly, roughly, it changes slightly.
Okay.
And if you go over to principal and interest, the principal stays the same, but the interest will go down by the four sixteen number. So that's a good thing, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, well, let's go to inter-fund transfers, out.
Where, what page you on?
One oh six, one oh seven. Just wanna point out that, um, in terms of capital non-recurring, we have in the budget two hundred thirty thousand dollars for replacement of the brownstone intermediate school windows and frames, and we have under Parks and Recreation, airline trail improvements, and speaking with the Airline Trail Committee, they don't need that this year, um, through their, through their grant and other contributions, they don't feel they need that, so that will be a reduction of ten thousand dollars on page one oh six, just so you can follow along. The townwide computers, printers stays the same, revaluation stays the same, the reporting system for the police, we talked about previously, ninety-nine five, and the highway division replaced the dump body forty-five thousand, which is something we have talked about before.
Yeah, I had a question about the dump body.
Yep.
Uh, Rick, is that dump truck on, in service now, is it being used?
That truck is being used on a limited basis, we load it, not that it's, the body is shot, the body, should've been replaced last year, and gave it up. If you don't replace the body on the truck, you won't use the truck, and it's, uh, you know, chassis on these trucks, the body is, the body's degraded much faster than the cabin chassis, so without the replacement body, that truck is a prime, is the mainline truck, one of your plows, won't work.
Okay, so now, are there other trucks, I know that there were like twelve dump trucks, are there dump trucks that may not be used, that that could, if, if that one was taken offline for a while, could another dump truck take that one's place, and then wait a year to purchase that dump body?
Practically no, to answer your question, no, that is a, that is a mainline, that is a part of one of the nine major trucks.
What's a truck like that, what's a truck like that cost two hundred thousand? And is it otherwise in good shape, the motor?
Yeah, the, the, the truck is, uh, is in good shape, the cabin chassis, drive paint is good, we've done this, uh, we replaced the body, uh, a year ago, same situation, the bodies go before the, before the chassis, it's just, it's just the nature of the beast, we're dissolved, and we, uh, part of that question you asked earlier is the overtime, additional overtime, where we're treating these trucks, uh, with a film that, that slows.
Corrosion.
Prevent it, but it slows it, and that's something that we do on weekends, it's a little bit obnoxious, uh, when we do it, so that, that, and that's something we, we got to do more, so, we do everything we can, and quite honestly, we're fortunate, but we dilute our road treatment by, by parts, we mix ours salt with, by parts, sand, whereas the state, I know, a lot of areas with a straight, straight salt product, which would be, which is more corrosive than what we use, so, but to answer the question, the bodies, the dump bodies grow fast, and, uh, they're not cheap.
Rick, how many big trucks do we have?
There's nine, I believe, there's nine, there's more than nine.
Do we have one spare for all those, or?
We have one spare that's, yes.
Yeah, well, no, so, yeah, you need all the front lines, I get it.
Yeah.
On page one oh seven, we talked earlier about reducing line item nine zero 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 seven, no, that's not right, other, nine zero zero six, the one above it, ten thousand dollars for the, um, the, the money that we use if we need to board up windows of light, we have enough money set aside for that from other years that we haven't used it, so we don't need to put that in there this year, okay?
And we haven't used it recently?
We haven't, no, not, not in the last few months, at least.
We, we didn't utilize it once, we did, and when talking to a tax sale, we did recoup the money, so we have utilized it, for, uh, for the purpose, uh, so, there's two options you have, you have one option is you leave the property, but then you can't tax sale, the other one is you tax sale the property, um, this individual's owed a lot of money on taxes, so then, you have to do the tax sale, or some worthwhile tax sale, so that will handle that.
Speaking of tax sales, there may be a tax sale coming up, uh, this week, this Thursday. This is a way that we, um, get back taxes that are owed to the town, uh, rather than foreclosing, a tax sale is less money for the town to incur, and, um, they're, I think they're actually fairer, cause they give a long time for the property owner to either pay off, or to make other arrangements, um, for their property. So, you, you may see that in the papers, I know East Hampton talked about doing it, we've been doing it for quite a few years, uh, we don't have as many as we did in, a few years ago, but there is one this Thursday, uh, the auction is at ten o'clock at the Buck Foreman, if anyone's interested, it's a property in town.
Uh, before we go, before we go forward, um, just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the windows, which have to get done, no, no panic, no, okay, the question becomes, um, when we had our tour that we did, we know that we have to allocate money so that we can get quotes and get the process started early enough, so that we can have the work done, my understanding from that tour is that it was not likely, given where we are now, when the budget would be approved, for the work to get done this summer, but that we need to get the process started so that we can definitely get it done in the summer of two thousand and nineteen. The question becomes, cause we know we have some things that are going on with some of the fields, um, I think tennis has some concerns, some concerns with the track, about, do we know how much money we would have to spend in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, to make sure we can make the commitment to order the windows, get the bidding done, and buy the necessary materials, per se, but then also know that the actual work is probably gonna get done in fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, cause it probably would get done after July first, uh, you know, of that summer, you know, next year. So is there a way to balance that, so without raising the budget, we can do both things, is what I'm trying to figure out?
I wanna say that I feel that we cannot rule out yet that the project couldn't be done, I know that's what Paul said, I was there, when he said, uh, we now have an architectural drawing, a drawing has been provided, uh, to the, to the EZIQ system, um, and furthermore, because of the nature of the, where the windows are, I haven't explored yet whether or not, if we were pushed because of dates, that I couldn't relocate classrooms temporarily, now that would depend on abatement issues, uh, because of course, kids can't be in, that, but I think those are gonna be addressed during the, or could be addressed during the summertime when we do the abatement issues with the second floor, which all of you, uh, participated in that walk, so, I'm not convinced that this project couldn't happen, and completely happen in the summertime, and I just, I'm, I'm fearful, I hear what you're saying, I think, but I'm fearful of kicking it down the road.
Yeah, no, I would, that's what I was gonna say, I think everybody, that was a fantastic tour of the facilities, it was a real good look at what has to get done, I think everybody agrees those windows have to get done, so, at least I know from my perspective, and from what I've heard, there's no argument on that, it's more, more a money management issue, and if we have other things that are gonna creep up, how do we manage it so that we don't have any extra burden to the taxpayer, and try to manage multiple things that are going on at the same time? If it's gonna get done this summer, then obviously, that's, that's optimal, cause that's gonna save energy over next winter, et cetera, if it's not, then that may be an opportunity for us to also take care of some other things we have to do, that's all, just trying to figure out how much we can get done with as little as possible, it's, it's the mantra.
I know, and I just can't push this project off without me knowing clearly that it can't be done, as, as you know, we have some existing funds in the capital account, and Tom can clarify this if necessary, from the previous window project, that we can apply toward this project, um, toward our architectural spending, expenditures, or any early work that we could get done, uh, relative to the project.
Okay, and that's, so that means there are things, steps you can, you can do, obviously, now, so.
I can't issue the guarantee, but, but I'm, I'm dead set on, on doing what I can to get this thing done.
No, well, they need to get done, and no one, like I said, no one disagrees.
Yeah, I mean, we were just, like, from the standpoint, we know, for instance, we're talking about the tennis courts, and if, if you, if you've got money to float, because you can't do the installation, and we can use that for the tennis courts this year, then that would be a better use of the distribution of the funds, but.
But, I'm just gonna jump in for one second, and then I'll let you speak, but my, my concern is that we expend some money, and we, and we say, oh, well, you know what, we're gonna get funded on the installation for two thousand and twenty, and then everyone keeps telling me, uh, you're not gonna get money in two thousand and twenty, you guys have to get creative, so now we've invested money that's essentially hanging out there, um, with a half-done story of our lives, half-done project, uh, so that makes me really uncomfortable, uh, as the chairman of the board, that, you know, um, the, there's an implied, we'll give you more next year, but I believe each and every one of you said, we're not gonna give more next year, so, I mean, I'm just saying, it sounds good in theory, but I don't think in practice.
But that wouldn't make sense for us to give you funding for, buy the windows, and then have them sit, I, I mean, I can't imagine that, I would not agree a year from now for you to pay for the additional funding to put in the windows that are sitting in some parking lot, or something else, or whatever.
I, I.
If it saves us money, I'm okay with arguing that.
I don't understand, why don't we just run a hundred emails an hour, and Dr. Ollivie says that we can't do it, give them the tools to just run a hundred emails, get the quotes, get the bids.
We don't have a problem with that, I'm just telling you that obviously, if you don't, if you don't install it, then the money doesn't come to you, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, fuck, every time we get to it, but let's run a hundred emails, a hundred emails, no one else, so he says I can't do it.
Then that's fine.
I don't, I don't think anybody is arguing that point, and I think everybody would be happy, based on what we saw with those windows, if they got done this summer, but you gotta keep and remember that when we took our tour, one of the things we were told is that lining up a vendor and trying to get it done this year may be very, very difficult, if simply not possible, so if that's gonna happen, and obviously, if it can happen, terrific, if it can't happen, then we're just trying to figure out how to be very smart with how we're allocating it, and maybe take care of something else, if, if it's not possible to get it done this year, then address something this year that is possible, and then complete that next year when it is possible, and keep everything moving, that's all we're trying to do.
Issue, as I recall, what Paul was telling us during that tour, was we have to buy the windows like now, so if we are allocated these funds, and some of it is spent doing other things, we're gonna be in the exact same position next year, and we're gonna have to come there to pay for the windows to be fabricated, to be installed.
That was actually the part, that was actually the part two of the question would be, is that if we have a quote coming, and we know what the windows cost, right, you don't do any of this in blind, if we know what the windows are gonna cost out of a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget, right, I think right now, two thirty is budgeted, we don't know if it's gonna be one ninety, or if it's gonna be two sixty, but we know we're thinking it's around two thirty, based on previous, if it comes out that buying the windows was, you know, whatever, you know, ninety thousand dollars, or a hundred and forty thousand dollars, then you know what you have left, that you can, you know, you have an idea what you can do, that's all, and, and it wouldn't be, um, it's not something we'd be looking to be taking a risk with getting it done, it's just trying to be smart in terms of how we manage the money, cause we have very little to manage, so.
Well, I guess if we're gonna manage money, then we should spend four hundred grand on piece of property we have.
All right, let's, all right, that's, that's off topic right now.
It's part of the whole discussion, to sound out.
Tom, did you wanna say something?
Yeah. Yeah, so I just wanted to, kinda, just go over the project a little bit more, it's, you know, uh, these projects are quite involved, so, for us to do much of anything, you have to have that allotment, the more or less allotment that you need, because there are multiple components to the project, so you'll have an environmental consultant that's engaged, and they go through all the processes and procedures that are required based upon the state regulations, they go through and do all the specific testing and all those components, they will go out and hire, utilizing probably the state contract for environmental, they're gonna go hire a demo consultant that's specifically involved for that demo, those components will likely be, uh, so this will probably be likely a prevailing wage engagement, and so that, those, they'll quote that segment of the project, there is a little bit of hot stuff on the back, on the, on the side, by the, the, um, the, the greenhouse, a little a little less hot, but still hot. So there's all, there is abatement that needs to transpire for those components. So, so you have to be able to go and say, we have authority, we have the monies and approved for the project, this is what you have to do to that gentleman. That gentleman goes out, puts the contract out, the providers come out, they tell you what that piece costs. Again, until they, until we get to a component where we know there's money, these other guys aren't going to do all their pieces, because they're not going to just spend all this time putting it together, but it's not. So then they do the demo component. There's all specific rules they have to do, encapsulations and things, whatever they have to do. Then we utilize a nice program through the Connecticut Council of Governments, CROG, it's an EZIQC program. So the state's bid into four components, everybody earns, owns a unit pricing structure. And so we, we take, we take the drawing that we've gone out and got from our architect, and we provide that to the EZIQC process. They go in, utilizing probably the manufacturer that we had used in the past project, if we can, to get a similar window that would work. They will come up and design that window and give you a price on that, and then there's a component of installation. So all that work comes into when we know the, the, you know, when we have authority. We kind of are kind of coming up with what we think it's going to cost, but until we get all these pieces together, you can't do it, they don't, one, no one's going to do it with you, and you're not. If you don't have the money in your, like, if we don't do it now and get the money set aside, whether you get it done now or whether you get it next June 25th, if you go into the same route next year and don't have it done, no one's going to do it. You can't issue a partial contract. You can't be like, oh, I'm going to give you some of this, because you don't have authority. You have to give us the authority to give us the money. So we're looking for the capital authorization of that global amount of money so we can go forward and engage people to do things. We have a little bit of authorization from the last project, that's how you get the architect design and those type of things, but not nearly what you need. So that's where we're coming from. We're hoping that with the number we put there, with a little bit we have left over, that that's going to get the project done satisfactorily before school starts. If it doesn't, and, and, but the pricing comes in reasonable, we'll know we can get it done the next year. But I don't, I don't think there's really a question if there, if there's a real desire to get this work accomplished. You know, the authorization needs to be put there so we can go do it. That's kind of what capital authorization is in Fund A. You're giving us the authorization to go do a project. So that's what we're looking for, the authorization, to go ahead and move forward, and it's very hard to do partial authorizations. On, on the track side, we, you know, internally, the, the grounds maintenance supervisor had met with other components, you know, the, the, the Board of Ed needed a, a, a repair that was required to be done, or, or tracks components were going to be closed. The, the athletic director was going to close various sides of the track. So that, that purchase order had been issued out of operating funds from the Board of Ed this year. That is out. That, that will get done so that the, the meets can continue and that hopefully children don't get injured on that. That will hopefully give you the one to, two to three years to hopefully come up with a plan to design the rebuild. There, there doesn't appear that there's really a mid-phase situation at this point. It's really, let's get, where kids don't get injured, you know, immediately, let's utilize the track while we can, you know, and that, that PO has been issued as, as I was told that I could, you know, we were going to close the track and not have meets or move meets. So that, that is issued, I believe the contractor's scheduling that hopefully over the break, if not sometime thereafter. So, I mean, so that's kind of where we're on the track, the, 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 the tennis courts, I mean, that stuff hadn't been really brought up before. There's been numerous other major components that are, that are required to be looked at, and I can understand why they weren't brought up, as there's other things that are much more pressing and, and needed to be there now. Those things need to be looked at, and I'm sure that the board will put that on their capital plan in the future. But that's, hopefully that gives you a little bit of a picture of where we're coming from, trying to get this project to where it needs to get to the end game and getting that capital authorization from you all to say, hey, hey, guy, go do, go do this project, get it done.
Yeah, I think that's why, I prefaced everything that I said with this, we don't, you know, we don't want to do anything that jeopardizes getting the windows done. It's more trying to get as much done with the money we have in this fiscal year as possible, so that's all.
What's the threshold now? I know the state was going to change the threshold to a million for a non, for a repair.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's changed yet.
What's the threshold now? Is it 200?
100.
100?
For repair.
100? Can we split it into two projects?
You just said you couldn't. Did you not listen to him?
No, 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 in the same year.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Two floors.
Dr. O'Reilly, if, let's say, you have two months, you have two months of the summertime, the abatement probably could be done then, so then the rooms are safe, they could probably be boarded up with plywood or whatever, and then the windows could be done in the fall?
I can't, I really got to be careful about what I, what I said, but I, but I would be willing, as the, as the district leader, to look at if everything wasn't being, shutting down a section of that building and relo, temporarily relocating people if I had to. But as Tom said, you know, we're looking at this project.
But the safety of the children, that could be, that part of it, which is a safety issue, which is the abatement, the windows could be removed, the asbestos or lead could be removed, and therefore the only thing that would be next would be to install the windows. And that could be maybe done in the summer or at another time. I would explore that.
I think you can get that done. I mean, Kreps are going to build a whole supermarket in Marlboro and be open by November. I mean, we should be able to get these things, just go, go like hell.
So, so one thing to consider that we talked about on the tour with regard to the abatement of the rest of these tiles, every time you chunk out a part of something and say, we're just going to do this room, or we're just going to do this hallway, then you incur the expense of the setup and the takedown. So now if you chunk out and say, we're going to take out asbestos, they're going to set everything up, they're going to take out the asbestos, and then we're going to pay for them to board everything up, and we're going to pay for them to take everything down, and then they're going to run into problems, right, with that process of, of, of that, and that's going to be additional expense. So any time that you start breaking apart a project, you're, you're going to incur more costs. Would you not agree? Is that safe?
So I'm just talking about windows?
Right, but I'm saying that you've added another piece to the project by saying, another layer, and, and so with that comes expense. And, and I understand and appreciate what the board is trying to, to look at. I just think that so many of our projects, the track and the windows and the roofs and the, it gets piecemealed, so we're not working things together.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm basically saying that if you can get a contractor to come in this summer and remove what they need to remove, and you're right, there would be an added step to put plywood in, but I think they might have to do that anyway, because once they take the windows out, they got to put something there before they install the windows, or if they take them out and put the windows in right away, that's great. So I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward, and if it can be done this summer, and let's say we know what the budget is by May, that gives you June, July, and August to, I guess, go out to bid and get a contractor. Doable?
I would hope so.
Okay, then let's go.
Well, is there a lot of contaminated material in those windows?
The caulkings.
The caulkings.
They assume, remember, well, you were in the tour.
I was there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Remember, Dr. O'Reilly said that they assume the caulk is the same contamination as the other windows, that way you don't have to go through the testing and you don't have to go prove it, you just assume that it is the same contamination.
Mary.
So yes, there is some contamination, potentially.
Marianne, I'll, I'll start by saying, I want to give you the money. No, no issue there. My question, it's both floors on that wing, correct?
Yeah.
Top, bottom? Hear me out, because I remember when we were on the Board of Ed, we got creative on one of our window projects to get it to come in, and I think it came in at 98,000, just under the threshold. Could you look into doing the upstairs as one and the downstairs as the other? And send it out as two bids, please, and get two different contractors for all I care?
That's Tom.
Tom made, Tom made it leave the room.
No, we did, we, no, we did, well, here.
We got lawyers in the room here.
No, hear me out, no, hear me out.
We've got to be careful.
No, that's fine. When I was on the Board of Education, we did do that with one of the window projects. So don't say you don't want to get into that. I want to get into it. I want to get into anything that saves the residents of Portland money, and if that is one of the possibilities, then it is fine, then yes, we should do it, especially if the state is considering changing the threshold from 100,000 to a million on this exact project. And I'm not sure, when, when is that going to go in, Susan?
It's a short session, I'm not sure Ben, that they're doing it.
I, I have no problem with that. And I, I believe we do have to give them the money now, because they need to order the windows, they need to make the windows, and they can figure out how to get them in in the most timely manner, I'm okay with that. But if this can be put in as two bids, and they can come in at 80,000 a bid, please do it.
Well, the whole project is 260.
At a prevailing wage, you're right. We did that before, and the windows came in at 240, and then we split the job and it came in at 90 something.
I'll do this, I'll call.
That's all I'm saying. I've already been through this.
I'll call and find out about that pending legislation.
Thank you, Susan.
Ben, okay.
And Marianne, if you could look into, on your end, if it is okay to do it like we've done before, please. Because then you could save substantial money and put it towards some of these other items that we're discussing. We need to get creative.
We do.
Correct. I'm with you 100, but if we can get them completed at a substantial savings, then we should do it. I'll give you the money, you guys figure out how to spend it, and I'm okay with that. I think it needs to be done at the number you want right now, that's fine, but try to save the money on the tail end and use the money other places. That's all I'm saying.
Anything else on, on the windows?
Well, I just want to say that I want to say I support the, I, I realize you guys are passionate about your windows. I in no way wanted to say I didn't want to do the windows, okay? So I just want to make that very clear.
You can tell how passionate we are. They're getting their windows, guys.
Like you say, I was on the Board of Selectmen in 2011, and we were talking about these windows.
Yeah, they, they got to get done.
We're passionate about the progress.
Yes.
I want to see them done so we can save some energy.
I can speak for the guys.
Right.
That's a good point.
And it hasn't been said tonight, for you guys to come in at a zero, for the Board of Education to come in at zero, that, that's a, that's a cut. I mean, if you look at the increases, so kudos to you guys, great job. You know, we, we're all in a bad boat, and we, we got to get creative, but I have no problem budgeting the windows, and if you can save, you can keep the change. How's that, guys? That's all I'm saying.
Is that on the record?
It's on the record.
You can't do that.
That's making promises.
You can't do that.
Well, I can, I can say my, I can say my vote, yes, I can.
I also want to point out, since we're talking about renewable energy, on page 107, there are dollars in the account. I asked Tom about that, that matter as well, so there's still dollars in there, and we have not expended it. So I would suggest it's $5,000 that we not included in this year's budget, but there is sufficient amount to purchase the renewable energy that we purchase every year, because I'm looking at one of our members of the Clean Energy Task Board.
Not technical.
What's that?
I don't think so.
Oh, okay. Well, I mean, thank you. I know someone in your family that's very active, thank you. And as Rick has pointed out, we got to get more aggressive in terms of saving of energy. Certainly the windows will help, and I think we need to follow through with the Board of Education. We talked about this, for those of you that weren't at the tour, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education, along with the staff, went through all the buildings except for the high school, middle school campus. And one of the things that I certainly want to get, and I'm eager to get started on, is energy savings in any way that we can in school buildings as well as the town buildings. That doesn't end, I think that's ever progressing. We need to, need to make sure that we work with you, your building and grounds committee on that.
And did I mention more solar panels?
Yes, I think you did.
And you're in favor of the windows. I'm in favor of them.
Are you in favor of the windows, Tom? Make sure I understand where you're at with that. And for tho, again, as members of our audience that maybe are not frequent visitors to the school, we did look at the windows, and they are very, very needy here. They're, they're, they leak, I could feel the air coming right through, they certainly need to be replaced for safety as well as energy savings, and to be consistent with the rest of the building. And this will be it for the windows, Marianne, for that building?
In brownstone.
In brownstone, right. That's good, thank you. I'm in favor of the window replacement project.
No.
Okay. While we're talking about schools, do you want to talk about Board of Education budget? Any changes for that? And I'm not anticipating any change in that.
We've got more left, we have more left to give. It's a zero.
Coming, coming in at a zero with all the other contractual obligations is really...
And it, and it hurt, just so that we're all clear. And you know, Susan, I do this on a regular basis.
You need to make your annual statement.
I need to make sure that people understand that when you come in at a zero and you do have contractual obligations and increasing costs and rising special education needs, it's, it's going to have an impact. And our goal is always to try to reduce that impact by getting creative. And earlier, at 6:00 PM when we met, we had a discussion about an attempt to bring some services into the school that would address some of our higher specialty students that have emotional special needs, that would provide services within districts that are currently out of district, and partnering with other districts to share resources. These are all things that we're doing to try to control an uncontrollable situation. We've said year after year, special education is an uncontrollable, unfunded mandate.
It's an unknown.
And, and every time someone reads our sign and comes on over, we, we are responsible. And, I mean, you could laugh, but truly, I'm ready to go take the sign down because it's costing us. And, and so at any, on any given day, we could get a new student with outplacement and special needs that we are then automatically responsible for. So every year, we budget as physically responsibly as we can, and we've heard the, the request, and we, and threw a lot of hard work on the part of Dr. O'Reilly with finance, with Ann, you know, and with the Board of Ed coming together in a united way to, to really say, we don't like this, but we understand it, and, and we'll, we'll live by it as best as we can. But, but it's a, it's a challenge, and when we deal with those challenges on top of the, the physical challenges of our buildings, it becomes daunting, it becomes daunting. So.
Have you kept track of how many zeros you've had since you've been on the Board of Education? Because they're right.
Too many zeros, Ben.
Yeah.
Too many zeros since I've been on the board.
Well, keep up the good work, we appreciate it.
Yeah, well, you know.
All of you.
So, that was my view. Thank you, Marianne, and thank you, Board of Education and Superintendent O'Reilly. I also want to say that, you know, we, we need to continue to work together, as I explained earlier in the meeting, and we stand ready to assist in any way we can. So we will work with you, and hopefully, I know the Board of Ed helps us whenever we need assistance from your expertise as well. We appreciate that.
And for clarification on the windows, when you go out to bid.
Are we still talking about the windows?
Yes, it would, for clarification, it would be for the timeframe to get it done efficiently is what you put it down for, and therefore you can be two bids, because you need them both working at the same time. So we're clear, so nobody's skating any union prevailing wage, we're just getting things done in a timely manner.
Very good. Thank you. Good discussion. Yes, Marianne.
Is there more, more to that discussion?
I don't think, Tom.
My friend is dying, and I need to send him home because he's ill, and, yes.
Tom, is there any other questions that you would have, or the board member for Board of Education? You're welcome to stay, and you're welcome to leave.
I don't know, because what I think we have to say is just a few other things we may[1788.63]
We're having a few other things we may need to talk on that are just things that will wash. Some things related to that debt, there's a little revenue, a little extra cash. Pretty much the...
They're a wash, but they have to be put in.
Your cost of funding, your issuance cost, and your revenue associated with that.
Thank you, Tom.
And there's revenue of the miscellaneous expense and debt, a hundred and five dollars.
And there's some changes in the Public Works Department as well, as I pointed out earlier. Is there any other concerns or changes within the various pages?
What's this? Are we back to... Are we back to the... Are we off Board of Education? Are we still...
Yes, yes.
What's this contingency fund, one oh nine?
Contingency is, in the event...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Good night, Mary Ann.
Good night. Picture.
Contingency is for just what it says. If something comes up that we haven't budgeted for, we, as you can see, don't always utilize it. But this year, I would anticipate we will, given the reductions that the governor made to our budget, and the hundreds of thousands of dollars of reduction in revenue. So, that will definitely be used. We did not use it the previous two years. I can't quite hear you that well.
It's not that we don't utilize the money, it's that the money is transferred to the appropriate budget. Okay. Or it's not that it's just not utilized, it's that it's transferred to the appropriate money.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Other special revenue funds? We're not talking about water and sewer tonight, because we're talking about general fund So, in terms of animal control and youth services and resource recovery, Building Maintenance Fund, Parks and Recreation Department, those budgets receive general fund revenue. So, if there's any suggested changes in that regard, and then those budgets are adopted after the budget is passed technically. Were there any questions in any of those? I know there were questions, but I don't know that there's any changes. Any questions?
Well, one thing that you had brought up, or we had discussed, is fund balances in some of those accounts?
And I talked with Tom about that, and he informed me that we'll likely use those fund balances this year, again, potentially, because of the severe loss in revenue that we've had. So, I would, and after talking with him today, I would hesitate to make any further changes for next year, because we may need to use some of that to balance this year's budget. Tom, do you have the number, ballpark number of reduction in state revenue? Not for next year, but the current year?
Someone with a computer, I don't have it right in front of me, but I think it was eight hundred thousand.
So, between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars in the budget did not come...
This current year.
This year, today. From July one seventeen through June thirty eighteen. We anticipated getting those dollars, but then when the budget was passed on Halloween, and then further pullbacks that the governor made, it amounts to between eight hundred and a million dollars, eight hundred thousand and a million dollars. So, some of that may come from utilization of some of these transfers being not done this year, depending on how the other numbers are. But we will keep you informed of that, but we certainly need to have that at our disposal.
Now, is there any chance of the legislature restoring?
Not... I would anticipate not this year. What they're working on now is next year's refinements for next year's budget. Someone told me today at a Connecticut Conference of Municipalities meeting, what the policy director for CCM, that while there may be something on paper that may improve the education cost sharing grant, he said you have to be aware that the governor's office, to mitigate a deficit, could hold back those dollars. So, I think for planning purposes, we're probably wise to use the governor's budget at this point. We have nothing else. So, I would not anticipate, even if those dollars do go up, I don't know that we can predict that today. What we will do is if we hear anything, we'll let you know right away, if there's additional dollars that may be coming. I did receive word at CCM today that there is a general transportation, it's called Municipal Projects Grant Program, that twenty-seven towns got it over the weekend, if you were looking at Harper Current, have an article on that, and other towns will begin to receive that payment. I can't tell you what it's going to be, but it'd be mostly for public works-type projects. Right, Tom? Signs and fences, because the town aid road money is likely not coming.
Especially after what we just gave Harper?
Yes, forty million dollars.
Aren't we obligated over five hundred million?
I think, all told, I don't know the number, but it's large.
So, my guess is we're not getting the money. But what did we end up on, motor vehicle tax? It was going blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. They've raised that to, I think, forty-seven million.
Oh, so, okay.
So, we will not get any reimbursement. In other words, if your mill rate is higher than, let's say it's forty-five. I don't remember the exact number. If your mill rate in some cities are higher than that, the state will make up some of that difference for them between the forty-five and the sixty, what their mill rate might be.
The state then pays?
Pay, reimburses the town.
So, then why don't we just change our assessments, and we can raise our mill rate? Because it's just a... The town could whip that up in about six hours to tell us where we need to put the values to get our mill rate at ninety. It's doable. What a... Okay. Thank you, Susan.
He speaks in jest. Okay. I'll just tell you what I know. So, are there any changes in any of these other...
I don't know.
Again, it would be the transfer particularly.
I don't have any.
At this point, I don't have anything more.
So...
Yes.
I have to ask you if we're...
Certainly.
We talked about all these expenses, but...
Yes.
And we're like a million short on revenue. Or no, that's just for this year.
That's this year.
Yeah. So, what kind of tax increase are we going to be looking at?
Well, if you look at the front page, the proposed was a one point nine eight estimate. But again, you don't know what the revenues will be. That was the estimate, given the governor's numbers. But with the reductions that you made tonight, you're roughly looking at maybe about a half a mill reduction from that number.
Though we calculate point six or something. Point six.
Point six?
I think that's what we...
I had point five four three.
Yep. Point five four three.
Oh, that's because we had those other numbers we were playing around with.
Don't forget, I may want to take five thousand out of the signs, too.
That's what I had.
Out of signs, hey!
Well, if we are done doing that major changeover...
You can take that off. What page is that, Tom?
Wasn't it in the sixties? Yeah, it's the wrong guy. Trying to scroll.
As always, we're seeing updates on signs and keeping them in.
Yeah, but the big numbers were when we were changing them over to...
We could use that money.
Rick said we did.
We did. I mean, we have ninety-seven hundred units this year.
Ninety-two, you said. Ninety-two and change.
Ninety-seven, ninety.
Ninety-three, ninety-two, eighty.
So, we utilize a component of it, and we utilize the majority of it, the twenty-two is talking about the eighty, twenty-four, where they come in, capital item.
So, you're saying that all the big changeover time came out of a different...
The majority of it came out of a different area, yeah.
Well, why am I hearing this now?
As I was in the room with you, to ask the question.
Thank you for the answer. So, the changeover money came from different light item. It has nothing to do with that ninety-two and change number. So, our reoccurring number every year is going to be that number, because I don't want to cut a bunch that we actually need either.
I need two seventy.
I mean, signs get damaged over the course of the year. You know that.
Yeah, I just thought it was a big...
And we do put up...
The example is, the approach right now, we budgeted ten thousand dollars, right? We spent nine thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars this year.
Yeah.
And it's not really a lot. That other project was more than enough.
Okay. I got that out of Rick, that was part of it.
I heard.
That was what I got at. That number was driven up to that number because of the major changeover, but the major changeover.
There was a special grant program that the state was giving us, that we did a lot of that work on, those sign replacements. I mean, the bulk.
Yeah. It could be accurate, but I mean, I know for a fact that we used from eighty-four the capital. It was a month ago.
Yeah, I remember that. But I, yeah, I remember what you're saying, to be accurate.
I like it was this year, the zebra signs that were taken.
Oh, okay.
You know, like High Street, Oaxaca.
But...
So, they all get stolen every year, the money. And, you know, and you gotta go replace them all. They're all expensive. And plus, we're not in a continual rotation.
Yeah.
So, I think what I would say was, I'm like, popping them ahead. The street signs, we did a little bit in operations. We did a lot of it out of this other fund. Some of those reflectivity signs, we did the majority, a lot of it out of the other fund and born here. But you continually go through those reflective signs now. So, before, where a sign was whatever, it was maybe fifty bucks.
Oh, yeah.
Now, it's maybe eighty bucks, because of the reflectivity.
Correct, yeah.
So, you're seeing that cost. So, again, we did ten, we did anything. I guess what I would say would be, I would leave the ten thousand there. Let's see how next year plays out. If we don't need the money again, then, you know, you would say, okay, then, all right, we're at a new norm. But I don't know if you're at the new norm yet. You know, because right now, you're spent ninety-two hundred, now you only have eighty dollars left.
Eight hundred, yeah. Okay, unless there was a way to check out of that ninety-two, how much of it was the changeover money versus the replacement money? I'm just curious if five thousand bucks is enough to just keep up with the stolen signs and the replacement? If the ten thousand's the real number...
We spent a million, it had to be a, I would say, what, eighteen thousand maybe out of the other monies, which they doubled to the... It was a lot, yeah. Nine thousand dollar projects or whatever.
Okay. I can't steal the money. I can't steal the money.
Is this, are we taking into account any of the fees and tax changes with Elmcrest on the revenue side?
Yes, there is some of that.
In here?
Yes. It's a conservative estimate, but it is an estimate of increased fees, yes. But again, in budgeting, you want to, as we all know, you want to be careful that you don't overestimate your revenues.
Right.
Because you don't want to come up short, so you want to be honest about them, but you don't want to be too aggressive with revenues. Especially with volatility that we're under, as we talked about. So, at this point, you're at about a point five four reduction in the mill rate, which I can tell you is a pretty substantial amount over the years, wouldn't you say, Ben?
Yes. I think both sides did a wonderful job.
You're really very close to what the reduction in state revenue equates to.
Yeah, you said it all.
But we're still going up one point four two mils.
Yes, yes. Due to the reduction in revenue.
And really, this may be the easier of two years compared to next year, so...
Well, I'm not in favor of any increase, but I don't have an answer for what else to cut.
Right.
I don't know. Just seems like we're on a treadmill, and it's only getting worse.
Well, what you have to look at, and I think we talked about that, is major...
Well, you want to talk about the revenue side.
No, you have to take a look at major changes. I mean, if you want to, if you wanted to reduce the budget by one point two million dollars, that's substantial. And we don't typically budget with a large amount of extra. So, we run pretty close to what we think we're getting in terms of revenues and in terms of expenditures. So, if you really want to reduce a budget, you have to reduce or eliminate services. And you have to look, a strong look, at your overhead, because you're spending money in staff and buildings. And of course, staff provide the services.
Or do the opposite of what Susan's done over the years, and we could just do a really bad job and have the state bail us out in a few years. Those are the options.
You could take lessons from the mayor of Harper.
Yeah, and then run for governor after you. Do that.
No, 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 you have to run for governor before it's last.
I have a question about the street lighting on State Road. Who's paying for that?
It depends. Surely, some of them were put in by the town. Many of those lights are put in by the state. For example, on the bridge, that's all state. But some of the lights on Main Street are paid for by the town, because we put them in. People requested them. We think they're good for safety, and the state pays for some of them. Same on sixty-six and seventeen.
Okay, because there's been a light, and it happens to the same light local time, this light just before you came to right into Elmcrest.
Okay.
Has been on for weeks.
It's on or it's off?
It's on.
Probably the photo cell. If, I don't know whether you can see the number on the pole. If you see the number on the pole, if you drive very slowly, we'll report it. Michelle, my assistant, will send that in. We have a system that we send in any faulty streetlights. We send that into Eversource, and they... They're pretty good about taking care of that.
No, they're not, because there was this street light at the top of Russell Avenue got slammed into. The pole, they jury rigged it, the pole was there. The light was not on. They came and they put the light on. But then the light was on twenty-four seven before, after a month, and Rick's office called him twice.
Try Michelle. She's pretty good. She is.
We don't pay any difference in the electricity, correct?
No, no.
Not that I'm okay with just leaving the light on.
No, we need to fix that. We need to have them fix that.
If the light, I want to know, this is a logical engineering thing. If the light bulb is out, and the light switches on, is the power coming through the system?
You're not using any power.
You're right.
If the light bulb's not burning, it's not using any electricity.
But there is power up there.
There's power, like you can get zapped if you want.
Yeah, be careful.
Open circuit, closed circuit.
But anytime there's a street light that's in your neighborhoods that is not working, and you have the pole number, if you report it to my office, we'll help do our best to get it.
It was, the light was on twenty-four seven on the Arizona Bridge.
It's not that one.[1665.12]